Good morning. This is the special school board meeting for June 26, 2014, and it's now in session. Pam, roll call, please.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Neese?
Here.
Dr. Krupp?
Here.
Dr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
Thank you, Pam. Michelle Irwin, Director of Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Irwin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Bingley?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson and members of the board. On the published agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, nine consent items not previously submitted for information, two consent items previously submitted for information, and two information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There is a revision to item A5, Administrative Staff Recommendations. There are two revisions to the consent agenda, item F8 on official ballot language, and item F13 on administrative and professional reappointment nominations for 2014-2015. Also, there is one revision to the information agenda, item H20, on the school resource officer agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Prove recommendations.
Second.
It was moved by Dr. Krupp, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion? Let's vote. Now any discussion. And the motion carries five to zero. Dr. Bingley, will you please inform us about the administrative staff recommendations on this morning's agenda?
You mean as far as the folks that we were gonna...
We need to approve it, so... We approved the agenda. We are now going to...
Ms. Henderson, we have one reclassification transfer and one appointment to accept.
Thank you, Dr. Bingley. What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Dr. Krupp. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. Did you want to say anything? No? They're not here. Okay. That brings us to the recognition of visitors and awards.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. There are no recognition items this morning.
Dr. Bingley, are there any resolutions and proclamations?
There are no resolutions or proclamations.
Next is the presentation portion. Dr. Bingley?
We have no presentations this morning at this particular meeting.
That brings us to public comment. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented and answers to questions specific to district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." Please speak into the microphone and state your name. And I do not have a list. I have a list. We have one speaker, Ms. Kinley Nagel.
Director, to the microphone.
Sure.
Hello. I've been here many times before. My name is Kinley Nagel. I'm a certified special education teacher, and I have beautiful work. Wow. My work says that our children are not born with learning disabilities. We have to stop labeling them ADHD, bipolar, dyslexic, autistic. Many experts out there are supporting my work. I'm not the only one saying this. So, I bring strength, hope, and courage today. I'm still here after all the bullying that I endured in the public schools. The school social worker said I was making the other teachers look bad because of my success. I was bullied so badly, I had to leave, and I am unable to this state to find a job anywhere. Unfortunately, in a society now where adults bully adults, it's causing such fear in our children. They instinctually know to be afraid when we don't talk about what's going on, nor should we because of the extent of persecution that's going on in our society. There is such potential. Like I said, my work says that our children are not born with learning disabilities. I am talking honestly today about learning disabilities and the cause. It is our society. Do not be mistaken about that. Our children are terrified by our actions. What we are doing to one another is horrific. Extinctually, they know. The greed and the fear that is motivating this bullying and persecution, our children cannot sustain. I fear what is going to be asked of them. My work will transform this insidious and covert bullying and persecution without any uproar. My work, besides the fact, I've been told many times, is passionate. It's also brilliant. The simplicity of it will not cause an uproar. It will just educate. I want to educate the school board, the parents, the teachers, the support staff, community members. We have to examine our fears and our old beliefs. They are the bottom line to what's happening. And this is not something that is a childish notion to people sit there and laugh at. Our individuals in our society are regressed. The majority of our people are in shock, and they will live their whole life without knowing that. And people here in the audience are laughing. I don't find this a joking matter. Maybe it's out of anxiety and fear. It's a shame. Wake up. Our children need us to be emotionally available. Demand that they hire me. This is a simple act. I can help. I don't hear anyone else saying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nagel, and thank you for your passion. The board wishes to thank you, and your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. That moves us to the consent agenda. Dr. Bingley?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. There are 11 items under this category, nine consent items not previously submitted for information, and two consent items with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items? F8. Let me just look again, make sure that nothing else is on there. Okay, I'm good. F8 is the only one. Okay, if you could move that, Pam? I will entertain a motion to accept the consent item with the exception of F8 because it was pulled through discussion. Moved by...
Second.
Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Dr. Murray. Let's vote. Any discussion? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. F8. Who wants to start? Okay. Yes, Dr. Bingley?
Yes, Ms. Henderson. As you know, last year, or last year, last meeting, seems like a year ago, we brought language, draft language, that where there was some agreement on most of the language. We had a question at that point in time of six or 10 years. Since that time, as the board knows, we've continued to meet with groups in our community. We had some polling done, and it really is our belief that based on the feedback we're hearing, we would put six years in the ballot language. And that would... There are a lot of, certainly a lot of, community members who want to understand what's our picture look like after six years. How has, how have the dollars been used to serve us well in Brevard Public Schools? And we feel like that's probably the right addition to the ballot language. The only other change was we added the word "school" in front of "facility" in the body of the language to just really reflect what was also in the title. And other than that, the language remains, as you saw in the previous board meeting, and it's gone through a lot of groups, looking at the language and trying to get something that is easy to understand and that meets, you know, the test of what it is exactly we're asking of our community.
Okay. Any discussion?
I support that. I think most importantly, though, we need to make sure that we get the message out about the need. More and more people are understanding that six years is not going to solve the problem, that even 10 years wouldn't solve the problem. So it's important to let them know we're listening, but it's also important to let them, that people need to understand what the numbers are. They're, you know, capital's capital, and calculating is not terribly complicated, but we need to explain it very simply so that they know what it's going to take to take, keep these schools whole going forward. And the six years is not going to do it. But if it provides comfort to the community and just starting with six years, then we're good with that because I don't want to risk a single year of, to these children, based on going for something bigger. So I'm good with this.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Dr. Murray?
Yeah, I continue to hear from our voters, though, that they want details in terms of what this money is going towards, line by line, penny by penny. That is critical. That is critical for our people to have a clear understanding on this. You know, here we are, July, almost. It needs to be, it needs to be out there in the public pretty quickly because people, I think, are getting tired of not getting the information.
Mrs. Neese, thank you. Dr. Murray?
Dr. Bingley, a question. Wasn't there a wording? You wanted, you and I discussed on the phone perhaps changing the word "levying" to collecting?
Yes, ma'am. There was a suggestion that perhaps we use the term "collecting" versus "levying." I know, Mr. Beisland, you will probably want to weigh in, but we sought advice, and I think, Mr. Beisland, your feeling is that word "levying" has to be in there from that standpoint.
That's correct, Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Mrs. Neese. Dr. Krupp?
Just wanted to piggyback off what Dr. Murray said in terms of, once this is approved this morning, how soon would the prioritized list of projects be available because it says it has been published? The second thing I wanted to mention is, just by way of a matter of fact, once this is approved by voters in November, it does not go into effect until January. Is that correct, Judy? So we're looking at not necessarily six years, but five and a half? Or how does the six years roll over?
There's a half year on the first and the final year. So it actually, budget, it hits seven budget years, but the first and the seventh are half years.
Okay. All right. So it does end up being a total of six years' revenue? Okay.
And I'll let Mr. Theodore be more detailed, but as the board knows, and we recently gave you, we are targeting a end of July for, you've seen some of the literal detail sheets for every building in the facility, and then what we'll ultimately do is take prioritized greatest need from those and be able, our hope is even at the end of July, to publish then for every school, much as we gave, we gave you an example where another school district did this. What are the, what are the items for each school that would be embedded in, within these dollars? And I'll let Mr. Theodore explain a little more about that, but to your point, Dr. Krupp, because this is a November ballot question, we want to put in there that a list has been produced because by then certainly it will have long ago been produced, and we will have an independent oversight committee just looking at, these are the things that we said we were going to be doing in a priorities fashion. Are we on par for that? So if we could let Mr. Theodore?
Mrs. Neese has something first and then...
Dr. Bingley, I just want to add to what other board members have said. Getting this list out needs to be a priority. I'm not happy that it's not going to be till the end of July. This, this has been known that we've needed this for quite a while, and as soon as we can get it out there, the better. So please make it a priority.
We will. I'll let Mr. Theodore speak to the work that's been done to get us to this point, and it has been significant. As you recall, we did not, it was about $250,000 to have a consultant do that for us. We couldn't really afford that, and I'll let Mr. Theodore explain the work that his folks have done using the metrics within that.
Thank you, Dr. Bingley. Board, Mrs. Neese and board members, we have, we began this process in February. We hired a consultant to give us a template to train our people. We took eight people off task in maintenance, supervisors and several actual mechanics, to go around and survey all of our facilities. That process started at the beginning of February. It was a massive task. We have finalized the data collection and have been working for the last month, five weeks, on inputting the data into a massive database, putting pricing together. We've solicited input from our consultants, both professional and construction consultants, on some of the pricing to associate with the conditions that were reported in that assessment. And I have five people working weekends, one gentleman, a gentleman that's in charge of it stayed till 2:00 last night. I just spoke to him this morning. Our target was always August 1st. It was not possible for us to do this without me pulling an additional eight people off task to do this. I understand how important it is, but it always has been since February 1st, an August 1st deadline. We're in coordination with Michelle Irwin, and we'll give to her approximately in two weeks, the list or the items that we would associate with each school. You have to understand that this list will be for all facilities, and it will be everything that that facility needs. Because we're going to collect about $33 million for six years, that's approximately $200 million, we're going to prioritize on a condition assessment basis, one being the worst, five being new, one being that you need to do this immediately or at least in the next two years. We will sort by ones and then 1.1s and 1.2s, and we will stop at $200 million, whatever that means, and then resort that list by school and then give that list to Michelle to publish on a sheet of paper and a banner or a poster for each school. We will have that done by August 1st.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Theodore. Yes?
Mr. Theodore, will there be priority given to the schools that were never touched in the seven-year, that turned 10-year facility plan? Because you and I have discussed, there are schools out there that have never been touched with renewal dollars in the way other schools have.
Mrs. Neese, that's a very good question. There were, in fact, 21 schools that we absolutely did not get to in any fashion during that seven-year plan. I did not anticipate doing that. It's a very good question, but what I believe the most appropriate thing to do is sort by the individual need at each school and then say, for the district, that school has a priority one in their air conditioning or their roof or some other critical item. It has a condition one assessment, and I believe that we should list for every school those condition ones and allocate those 200 million on that basis. It's a good question, though, about trying to prioritize in some fashion the schools that we did not touch.
Before this list is publicized, will the board have a copy of it first? And as a part of that list, could you just put a star or note which schools were never touched in the past facility renovations? Because I think it's important for maybe board members that weren't here during that time to know what schools have never been touched.
Yes, ma'am. Well, first of all, my intention is around the middle of the month, the 14th, 15th, to get with each board member individually and show you what the intention is before Michelle prints 1,000 of each of these pieces of paper for each school. I can, in fact, indicate on that sheet that the school was not addressed in the previous facility improvement plan, but I will, by the end of the day, have emailed each board member that list that you'll have it immediately.
Dr. Bingley?
Just, Dane, doesn't logic dictate, however? If there are older facilities that, in fact, were not touched in that previous effort, then we're likely to see more ones and more 1.1s and things in those schools. I mean, by virtue of the...
Absolutely.
I would think.
Well, I hear that, but I've learned in my years on the board never to take anything for granted, so I want to ensure that that's the case.
Question, just to clarify, because I don't, because I know what's going to be in the mindset of our citizens is that, all right, you've got ones, 1.1s, 1.2s, and you're going to do them in order. But logically, when you're performing work, if you've got ones, 1.1s, 1.2s, all fall, it's the same type of a project at a school, isn't there a scale of efficiency where you might knock off some things that are not of the same level because it's too expensive to come back and do, like if it's air conditioning work, you try to knock most of it all out at the same time, even though there might be portions that are one? You know what I'm trying to say? It would be, there'd be times you might group things together in a particular location. Because I want to make that clear because somebody goes, well, you did a 1.2 at this school before you did a 1 at that school.
Yes, sir. You can approach project management in two ways. One, you can take, like projects, let's assume that we're going to replace, I'm going to make this up, the ceiling tile in 14 schools. I could put together a project where I hired somebody to go do ceiling tile in 14 schools. A more logical approach, and that's a viable approach, but a better approach, we found, is to group projects at one school. In other words, let's assume that you have seven, priority one through 1.9, and we would tend to group that into one project so that you minimize disruption because, at that school, because you don't want to come back and do 14, you know, 12 or 13 projects.
Okay, that's, I just want to clarify that because from a, like I said, from a management point of view, that makes sense, but some people might think they're being shorted because, so let's make that clear up front.
Right. Well, and then that's a prioritization of which schools get first. And maybe that's, that's to Mrs. Neese's point, that if we hadn't touched it before, maybe we prioritize those schools prior to another school, even though they have like needs.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore. Okay. I would like to say that the language now being six years instead of 10, even at 10 years, I believe that 10 years is not enough, knowing that we are only doing it for six years. I do want the public to know that this will not cover the needs. In fact, I was approached this morning by someone who said, you know, what happened to the language that was in there last time that said if you get back to the $2,007, $8, you know, that we might be able to cut it off? And I said, but the problem with that is we are now two more years in the hole, two more years of deferral. So what would have been 10 years, two years ago, had to be at least eight years now. So now we're back to six years, and, you know, hopefully it'll pass because, you know, this is, this is critical to this district. And I just want everyone to know that in four years, we're going to be right back here, the district, the community, everybody, talking about it again because it will, unless some windfall of money, we are, you know, you're going to have to try to continue that. Yes, Dr. Krupp?
I just wanted to add one thing, and Cheryl Olson may be able to speak to this along with Dane. Should the SRTAX pass in November, will we be positioned so that we have vendors ready to go hit the ground running, so to speak, with the projects that we've identified? And that's going to involve quite a few number of vendors.
Are you talking about shovel-ready?
Yeah, well. So that's my question. You know, I understand the RFP process, and I know we have certain commercial vendors on target now or on task already, but should we get a windfall with the SRTAX monies of $33 million, we should have vendors ready to go to work the next day.
Yes, sir, we are. We, along with Cheryl's department, we have been putting out requests for proposal for both design professionals and construction managers, design builders, and all of the tradecraft that go along with it. Maintenance uses those anyways on a continual basis. But yes, we have six design builders that we just approved. I'm sorry, they're about to be approved. We're still tweaking the contract. We just approved six construction managers. We have eight or nine general contractors for hard bid types of work, and I think 12 categories of professional service providers that have all been approved and are ready to go. We use those on a continual basis anyways, but yeah, we're ready.
When you're talking about design builders, you are not building any schools, right, Dane? Why don't you just go ahead and explain why we need those types of services so that people don't get confused and think that we're doing things that we're not before we start?
Yes, ma'am. We use, as a, for instance, we were given a one-time $15 million capital funds, funds for capital projects this year. That's a considerable amount of money, and if you're dealing with a project that's $300,000 or $400,000, we would use those design builders or construction managers on a continual basis anyways. In fact, for the last six board meetings, you've seen four or five projects come through where you're approving design build or guaranteed maximum prices for design builders and CMs to do those $300, $400, $500,000 jobs.
Thank you. I just wanted to make it clear.
And if I could clarify, remember, those are capital reserve dollars, and as we've presented many, many times, they're almost gone.
Right. Okay. Any more discussion?
Mrs. Henderson, might I just clarify?
Oh, yes.
Remember, we won't have, if sales tax, SRTAX, is successful, that money comes in on a monthly basis, so you're not going to have $32 million January 1.
Right.
So Dane can only do what we have money to do and commit.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Anything else? Okay, let's vote.
Moved to approve ballot language.
It was moved by Mr. Ziegler, sorry about that, and seconded by Dr. Krupp. Now let's vote. And the motion carries five to zero to approve the ballot language. Okay. We don't need a break, so that brings us to the action agenda. Dr. Bingley?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. There are no action items for you to consider.
That brings us to the information agenda.
There are two agenda items under the information category.
Does anyone wish to talk about anything? Okay. Done with that? Are there any staff reports?
There are no staff reports.
No additional public presentations? Any board member reports? Answers, no? Yes, Mr. Ziegler?
Two things, one of which is I will be speaking before the Women in Defense on July 17th about STEM as it relates to our current technology education programs, something a lot of people in this community have a lot of interest in, and I know this board has tremendous interest in. Also, I am, was, I was contacted by the airshow through the Chamber, because I'm involved with the Chamber. We have an upcoming airshow which will be at the, at the airport in, I think it's October and this year.
Which airport?
Oh, which, Melbourne, sorry, Melbourne Airport this year. And they're very interested in having an educational component to that, and so I'm going to get with you, Dr. Bingley, and figure out how we can encourage kids to take interest in aviation, which is also something this board has, has expressed interest in, and see if we can, as part of that, also work it in towards, we were talking about some type of academies, so there'll be all these aeronautical companies that are going to be participating in this. I think this will be a great opportunity... I think it's going to be a great opportunity for us to express that interest that I think you're already working on and be part of this airshow. So, I think it's a great opportunity for our students.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Bingley, do you have superintendent's request?
No, ma'am.
Well, then, this meeting is adjourned.